This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Iva Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you so much for life. We thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We thank you for the council. God, for the recent election. God, we just give you the glory and the praise. Thank you for the new members that are here today. And we just pray that along with the others, that you'll give them wisdom as they make these very important decisions that will affect citizens in their own communities. God, as we reflect back on yesterday, we thank you for the opportunity to stop and give thanks and honor to those who are serving in our armed forces either today or those that are here today that have served in the past. We thank you so much. For our veterans, and we just pray, God, that you would just bless them especially during this time. God, thank you for the members of the state delegation who are here present today, that you will bless them. You'll bless our state, our national government. God, we just give you the praise and the glory for all the good things you're doing. And our praise is yours. Thank you for your son, Jesus. And it's in his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the organizational work session held on November 2nd and the City Council meeting on November 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
All right, the Chair will now entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 31st through November 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor, if you have any. Item number eight on the agenda is unfinished business. First item of unfinished business is item number 8A. It's an ordinance amending city code section 118 through 129 to establish a no parking zone on the north side of Malone Street, 90 feet from North 12th Street. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The planning department requested this portion of the street be designated no parking to enhance traffic safety. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8B is an ordinance creating a pre-trial diversion program for the Gaston Municipal Court. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It establishes a program for certain offenders that meet specific conditions of behavior for a defined period of time and pay applicable costs and fees to have their charges mitigated. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Mr. President, please, I would like to ask for a 14-day table on this, please. I don't think we all fully understand this. I think it'd give us 14 days to trying to get all logistics out of what we need to know about.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table for 14 days and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the ordinance for 14 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
Item number 8C is a resolution approving appointments of council members to stand in committees. Action was deferred last week to allow time to complete the appointments. They are as follows. Clerk, I don't have my list.
Would you like me to read them?
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
Okay. The General Administration Committee, the Chair is Echols, Vice Chair Toles, and the member Williams. Finance Committee, the Chair is Williams, Vice Chair Echols, member Cannon. Education and Recreation Committee, Toles is the Chair, the Vice Chair is Worthy, and the member is Echols. Community Development Committee, the Chair is Reed, Vice Chair Williams, member Toles. Intergovernmental Relations Committee, Billingsley is the Chair, Cannon is the Vice Chair, Worthy is the member. Public Safety Committee, Worthy is the Chair, Reed is the Vice Chair, Billingsley is the member. Public Works Committee, Cannon is the Chair, Billingsley the Vice Chair, and Reed the member.
Thank you, Iva. I will say that I do appreciate the council members all being very gracious and professional about these appointments. I think we've got some good appointments and we've gotten most of, I think we got most of what we wanted and some of what we desired, so I do appreciate that. So the Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt these appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8D is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property at 1109 Fourth Avenue in District 3. The last known owners are the State of Alabama and Nathaniel King. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on October 8th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Nathaniel King.
Yes, yeah. I have been working on it.
Just a second, what is the pleasure of the council?
Can we hear what he has to say before we make a?
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, come on up, Mr. King. Mr. King, thank you for being here today. Just state your name and your address.
My name is Nathaniel King, 1109 Fourth Avenue. I have been working on the property. I'm just doing it myself, so it's taking time. I got two of the units ready for inspection there, but the other two I haven't made no progress on yet. So I'm asking for another two weeks. I have the other unit ready, I hope so, to have it for inspection from the City Council representative out there. As long as I'm working on it, they'll go easy with me then.
That's all.
As far as the two units that are ready, there have been two units that have been approved and no longer involved in this process. The two units or two structures that are part of this hearing today are the two garage apartments behind the main structure. And you have my recommendation. So if he's working on it, let's give him two more weeks then instead of abating it. Can I do that?
You can make the motion.
Since he's working on it and has two that's passed inspection, I recommend that we give him two more weeks and see what he can do with that, and then we bring it back before the council. Excuse me, I didn't thought you were turning. That's good, yeah.
So we have a motion to table for two weeks?
Give him a month. Give him a month.
Motion to table for 30 days and a second. Okay? Any additional discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to say that it's been my finding when you give somebody 14 days and they know what they got to do and they start working on it and they don't bring everything up, you're going to give them another month, and that month's going to run into six more weeks after that. But it's in your district, you know, I just, in District 6, we're having a turnaround in District 6. If you're not going to keep your property up, we're going to push it down. I'm not going to keep giving you time after time after time because if you've got time when this thing's been condemned, how long has that property been condemned, Brian?
I don't know.
Would you say a year?
At least a year.
Yeah, at least a year. But that's just, that's just the way it is in District 6. But I, whatever you want to do, that's what we're doing in your district. Well, if he hadn't gotten the other two ready, I understand it's taking time, so I'm going to give him a month, and if he doesn't complete it, pass inspection, I will be the first to recommend abatement.
Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for a period of 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Thank you.
Item number nine. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition of or in opposition to or favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances. And the properties that we have listed here will begin with two in District 7, the first of which is 304 La Genia Drive. Last known owners are Robert Mark Dougherty and Green Tree Frienancing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I am Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in August of last year. There've been no improvements to the property other than some boarding up and some openings on the exterior of the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mr. Harbison, have you done your assessment to determine if this one can be settled?
Mr. President, we normally don't do that until we get a resolution and some type of direction from the council.
Is this one that he's going to see if we can, does this qualify for the program?
We don't get a, no. Let's do the resolution, please.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Move to bait. Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 2920 Scenic Highway in District 7, Lester Cantor and Jean Cantor being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution?
I'm here to represent Mrs. Cantor.
Come on up, sir.
I have the pendant microphone.
Take your time.
Mr. Cantor is deceased for many years. I am Mrs. Cantor's gentleman friend, we'll say. Mrs. Cantor's a retired musician from the New York Symphony Orchestra, music teacher for 62 years, five major doctorates from five different colleges, a very intelligent woman. Unfortunately, she's very vulnerable. The house that people are talking about, I've been up there. I've been coming down here every month. I'm a Yankee, I'm from the north. I'm from New Jersey. The house is a beautiful home, but it was worn down and it needed work, so she hired a handyman. For five years, he's been telling her he's working on the house. I come down here every month, I come down every year for one month and stay here. I'm here 16 months now due to the fact that I found out he was ripping her off. The person involved is in a county jail right now. I have never looked into my lady friend's business. She owns eight houses in Gaston, which all the taxes are paid, and she owns two houses in Pennsylvania. Unfortunately, she broke her hip. From breaking her hip, she was in a hospital, she developed dementia. I went over, I have never done it, never took 20 cents off the woman. I'm not brought up that way. Anyway, I had to look at her assets and found out that he ripped her off for $140,000 cash and $35,000, maybe $40,000 of merchandise. So I brought all the evidence, all the papers, the bank statements to the police department, and they checked everything out, went to the bank and found out. I said, "Did you see the checks? She's been getting them up every other day, 1,000, 1,500, 800, 700." They said, "Yes, wow." I says, "Well," I contacted her sister, who was a professor in Florida. Unfortunately, her sister gets chemo every two weeks, so she has a problem. But I told her she better come up and take power of attorney. She came up and took power of attorney. She has control, total power of attorney of all her assets, her houses in Gaston and Pennsylvania. Everything has been paid, water bills to seven or six or seven houses that she has in Gaston, taxes have been paid on it, water bills, heating bills. Two of them houses are rented. And she owns a house down in the Panhandle, Orange County. She owns a home down there which is rented. I'm only a spokesman for her, but I have her sister's telephone number, and if you people want to talk to her, I have her call you people that's speaking about the house up in Sink. She spent $5,000 for the roof up there. She spent another $5,000 or $6,000 for two heating units to be put in the house. The roof was put on, but before the roof was, the new roof was put on, the ceilings were soaked, wet, they were breaking down. And the fellow that she was giving all this money to supposedly was working on it. I went up there and checked on him. He'd done some work on it, but he didn't finish it, so that's why it has to be tended to. Now, her sister put four of them houses up for sale to get rid of them. Rainbow City was sinking, so she called the engineers in and had the house tore down. They tore it down. She owns the property. Sink is a big home, it's a beautiful home, but it needs a lot of work. Right now, she told me, explained to you people, that if you speak to Clokey Real Estate, they have a buyer for it. They're in the process of going through the buying business, whatever they do now. And this is why the house is the way it is, because the fellow who was ripping her off all that money wasn't doing anything. He was sitting home drinking. I'd done a letter checking up on him.
Sir, sir.
He's an ex-marine.
Excuse me, sir.
And I don't know what you call him down here in the shop, but we normally call him shims. A shim means it's an alcoholic.
Sir.
He likes to drink.
Excuse me, sir.
But he's in the county jail right now for ADYs and fleecing.
Sir, excuse me, excuse me. We just, I think you made your, I think you made your case pretty clear, yeah.
You have to repeat what he's saying.
Can you give me your name for the record?
Francis J. Ganley, G-A-N-L-E-Y, Ganley.
Francis Danley?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Danley, I think you made the background pretty clear.
He said that you made your point very clear.
So what we need from you now, now that you've provided your name and address, what is it that you're asking of the council?
Well, she was afraid, she comes and goes with the dementia, and she was afraid that people were going to have her house torn down. She didn't want that, you know, she didn't want that done. So do you want me to have Mrs. Feller, who has to call you at Clokey Real Estate?
She will, she will need to, or whomever will need to reach out to that gentleman right there.
I'll cover it loudly.
You'll need to speak with Mr. Harbison, and he's sitting right there on the front row.
You want to call him?
Uh huh. You'll need to get the information.
Write his name down, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you.
That's it, okay.
Thank you.
I just tried to give you an idea of what was going on, what happened to her.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you, thank you. Okay, yeah. Give him a second. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this resolution?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of 2013. There was a building permit taken out in August of 2013. Been no visible improvements made to the property. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Yes, I do make that a motion to abate, but I want to give a reason for it. I meant to do this under discussion. For time's sake, and due to the fact that they do have a buyer, potential buyer for this property, we go ahead and abate it. Thus, we wipe out all this waiting around situation, okay? And then if they do something about it, fine. If they don't, then the abatement goes through.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Brian, have you been inside? Have you been inside?
No, just, I mean, what the pictures show, Mayor, the best we can tell from looking in the windows is most of the ceilings have collapsed and which, pretty good sign that the roof is deteriorated.
Brian, is this not the house that's on the opposite side of the hospital up there, about three or four down?
It is.
That house has been vacant for years, nobody lived in it, and if you look at the pictures, it's oblong shaped house, and it's got a flat roof on it, so there's probably, everything inside is probably gone already. Why don't you check with Clokey and see what they got going on?
Mayor, this was used for storage or a supply house for years and years and years. And it's like you said, it's gone. The outside's deteriorating down, the ceilings are caving in, and there's no way to structurally do anything about it.
I mean, somebody might want the lot that's on the brown side or something. It's on the brown side.
It is.
You know, if they got a contract that thinks is going to close, you could check with them and see.
That's what I said, if she's got a potential buyer for it, great. But I wanted it on record to abate it in case they don't, okay? It needs to come on down, okay?
Mr. President, how long are we going to give them to find out if who owns it or who's going to buy it?
That'd be the normal length of time it takes from right now until they abate it.
Okay.
So they need to get on the stick.
Ms. Toles, exactly what he's really speaking about here, once he abates this nuisance, it goes on Mr. Hilton's list to push down, and there might be 25 or 30 houses before him yet, so we're looking at probably two or three months, six weeks or so.
But they have that time to get the situation under control and do something about it.
We're looking at at least six weeks, I'd say.
Any additional discussion?
Call the vote.
Okay, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 105 South 23rd Street in District 6, the State of Alabama, Richard Franklin and Amy Samples being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of 2012. There've been no improvements to the property. We have dealt with three previous property owners. There are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is another I saw in District 6. I've been saying for the last three weeks, they're all coming down. This is a perfect example. They've had 31 months to do something with this piece of property, and it's sat there for 31 months. The people around it, it's got bugs, rats, rodents living in it, people's coming into these houses, staying at night, don't have a place to go, and it's just a bad situation. It's been 31 months. This is another case here in District 6.
Okay.
And we will be getting this on the push-down list.
Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 2326 Cansler Avenue in District 6, Leonard Washington being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in March of 2013. There've been a couple of building permits taken out, but as you can see in the pictures, very little improvements to the exterior of the property. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is an ongoing thing in District 6 also. It's changed hands a couple of times, been deeded to other people. We've tried to get the owners now to cut the grass. We have some ladies, a lady out there now lives close to the house. She's in the audience today. She's been wanting this house to come down. The house is boarded up. People's going in and out. There's cats, galore, all in this house, they're going through the windows, and the previous owner wouldn't do anything about it, not even cut the grass. It's a 33-month process. Ms. Worthy, I'm glad you're here today to finally get to see this is going on the list and it's coming down, and I appreciate all the patience of everybody on Cansler Avenue on this piece of property. But it will be on the list, and since Mr. Hilton gets on his list, it will be coming down.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1340 Stillman Avenue in District 1, the State of Alabama Equity Trust Company doing business with Sterling Trust for the benefit of Wanda Erickson IRA being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in August of 2012. There are no permits to improve. There have been no improvements, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If there's no discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I have to find it here. Is a resolution authorized agreement between the City of Gadsden and CDG Engineering for Design Service Required on Resurfacing on Third Street and Goodyear Avenue. I'd like to ask unanimous consent on this, please. It's budgeted for $48,253. And the city's share of this is going to be $9,650.60, which that is an 80-20 match. It's an MPO project also.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, I'm sorry.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, if I'm not mistaken, this is coming out of our $300,000 with the budget, is that correct? Isn't that what it's coming out of?
Yes, A-trip.
Okay. You want to explain, tell them what that is, Councilman Williams? Where the money's coming from?
We, and I may defer to our city engineer on this, but these A-trip projects, we knew, these MPO projects, we knew were coming down the pike. So these monies were budgeted to support the city's share of matching monies to, for these projects that are being partly funded through federal monies.
Good job.
All right, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any more new business? Okay, department reports, committees, boards? Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor, would you like to start?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything today.
I'd just like to take a second to thank all the restaurants that gave free meals to the veterans yesterday. And you need to think about that when you visit these restaurants because I saw a lot of veterans yesterday eat good meals. That's all I have.
Councilman Cannon?
I just want to reiterate that the City of Gadsden, nor this council, has anything to do with the Veterans Day Parade. I was bombarded last week and this week that the City of Gadsden canceled the Veterans Day Parade. The City of Gads did not cancel the Veterans Day Parade. We didn't have anything to do with it. As the Patriots Association and the Chamber of Commerce thinks who heads it up, is that correct, Mayor? So who heads it up? The City of Gads didn't have anything to do with the city council. I know we've all probably got caught about how we did away with the Veterans Day Parade, but we didn't do away with our Veterans Day Parade. And I want to thank all the people that marched yesterday or walked yesterday in the Veterans Day parade up to the bus station. I think they had a good turnout, and I appreciate all the veterans and what they did yesterday.
All right, so we have members of our Edgeworth County local legislative delegation in attendance today. Do want to recognize Senator Williams, Representative Butler, and Representative Nordgren. So we appreciate you guys being here today. And as I understand it, the plan is for you guys to be on the agenda for the 25th, I believe. So, so... Okay, all right. Due to the Veterans Day holiday yesterday, Tuesday's garbage route is being collected today. And Thursday and Friday's route will not change. Okay, one other, one other item is also due to the National Legal Cities Conference. The city council will not meet next week. The next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November 25th, with a work session at 10:00 a.m. and the council meeting at 11:00 a.m. With those two housekeeping points out of the way, I did want to allow the city engineer to speak very briefly about the tomorrow's MPO meeting regarding the strategic plan for road projects.
Thank you, Council President. Tomorrow, I just wanted to remind everybody there will be a long-range transportation planning update meeting from 4:30 to 7:00 o'clock at the Pittman Theater. Every five years, we relook at our long-range plan to see what kind of economic development, any growth patterns around the city that might have changed and where we need to focus our federal money as far as transportation improvements. Metropolitan Planning Organization roads cover mainly your arterial roads and what the state is doing with their, the state highways and federal highways. So it's your largely traveled roads through the city. We get 80% federal funds with those roads. So this is an opportunity for the public to come out and voice their opinion about where those funds need to go and how to prioritize those funds. So I just encourage you to come out and give us your opinion.
Okay, thank you, thank you, city engineer. I really appreciate that. That's, this is an important meeting. So if you have any interest in both understanding and impacting the outcome of some of our, of our long-range planning relative to road projects, please, please plan to attend and voice your opinions relative to those projects. If there's nothing else to come before the council, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Second.